Okay, we are ready now. We are in the Board, Douglas County Board of Equalization. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 29, 2013. Call for our meeting is set February 12, 2013, as a date of hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rule or increased value on property.
Mr. President.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an issue not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have one resolution, item D, approving application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion approved and adjourned.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 29, 2013. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, February 5, 2013. And item C, the claims presented regarding dot-com expenditures.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda. Items A through F are a total of six items.
Motion approved.
Are any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have a presentation, Child and Adolescent Community Health Needs Assessment by Bruce Lockwood from PRC, brought to us by Commissioner Rogers. Do you want to say anything?
It won't come up. There it is. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This, Mr. Lockwood presented this to the Board of Health about, in January. And you might know, but some may not, the Health Department, with the help of some hospitals, participated in an annual assessment that's done in regards to the annual health summit that's done in partnership with Live Well Omaha and Douglas County Health Department. That's a more elaborative assessment. This is one that geared specifically with children, adolescents, and some of the results of it, I thought, in respects to some things that we're doing with JDI, some of the discussion that's happening around the state, and other things happening health-wise that it would be good for the Board to see and also give some awareness to it. So with that, I will give it to Bruce to explain what that acronym is. Claire Axton.
The PRC. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Yes, I'm Bruce Lockwood with PRC, Professional Research Consultants, or a market research firm located here in Omaha, actually. And as you may know, Douglas County has a long history of measuring community health. What's unique in this past year is that the pediatric hospitals, Boy's Town National Research Hospital, and Children's Hospital Medical Center also funded a study specific to adolescents and children in the metro area to supplement some of the data that we've collected over the years. And that's what we want to share with you today, some of that information specific to children and youth. So, as I mentioned, we've done this for a long time in Douglas County, but the largest focus of that has been on adult health and various aspects of adults. So this assessment was done in a very similar way to the way that we've done the work previously, but again focusing on parents and children. So it included three types of data that we collected. Kind of the cornerstone of this assessment was a household survey that we did in the metro area. We spoke with 900, 902 actually, parents of children aged 0 to 17, conducted surveys via the Internet, as well as over the phone, landline and cellphone surveys. With a large focus in Douglas County, 626 of the interviews were in Douglas County, which we then segmented by quadrants within the city, also looking at the Western zip codes of Douglas County separately. This also included expanded into Sarpy County, as well as Potawatomi County. So that survey yields a lot of information. It was a very long survey. It was about 140 questions, I believe. So we have a lot of information collected through that. We also collected data through public health statistics relative to infant and child health, things like mortality rates for youth, also birth statistics, information that's collected through birth certificate information. The third piece was a series of focus groups that we convened with community leaders, including physicians, other health providers, social service providers, also community leaders, business leaders, et cetera, getting their perceptions of youth, particularly for those who service a youth population in their work. So, oops, I think I skipped a slide here. Yep, there we go. So there were eight areas from this assessment that emerged as what we call areas of opportunity. And these were the top needs that we identified for metro area youth and children. And so I want to walk through some of the key data points for each of these fairly quickly. There's a lot of information that was collected through this assessment, so what I'm sharing with you is just a brief snapshot of some of the key findings. The first area of opportunity that we want to talk about is access to services. There are a lot of questions in the survey that talked about access for children and youth in the metro area, asking people whether they've encountered specific barriers to getting healthcare for their child, et cetera. And what we found was it's one out of five parents, 20.9% in the metro area, who say there was a time in the past year when they had difficulties or delays accessing healthcare for their child. Now, that could be for a variety of reasons. Office hours was the most prevalent reason. 12% of parents said that there was a time in the past year when their child did not get the care they needed because they couldn't get there during office hours. We also found that about half of emergency room and urgent care visits for kids might have been averted if physician hours were available at the times that were needed, for example, after hours or weekend care. At the chart on right, you can see that one out of five parents in that red bar who said that they had trouble getting care for their child. We didn't see a lot of difference through much of the metro area, but we did see higher prevalence in the eastern parts of the city, which includes parts east of 72nd Street. We also saw higher prevalence in low-income populations. 32% of families earning below 200% of the poverty level encountered access barriers. Also significantly higher in African-American and other non-white populations. Access was also one of the top issues that was identified in those key informant focus groups that I talked about with community leaders and health providers. And they talked specifically about cost and lack of insurance, families who might be underinsured as well. They talked about geography as limiting access, particularly for those in the northern and southern parts of Omaha, as well as some of the other parts of this metro area, Bellevue, parts of Potawatomi County, for example. They also talked about office hours, transportation, culture, and those were some of the key barriers that they mentioned. The second health area we wanted to cover was asthma. And we identify this because asthma is a leading cause of preventable hospitalizations for both youth and for adults. And in the metro area, we found it's about 9% of kids who are school age, so age 5 to 17, who have been diagnosed with asthma by a physician. At right, you can see that that is particularly high in the northeast quadrant of the city, 19.4% among kids living east of 72nd Street and north of Dodge Streets, 25.9% among African-American youth. So there's a prevalence that's about nearly three times as high as the average. For kids with youth, this can lead to many hospital visits, emergency room visits. 12% had three or more urgent care or emergency room visits in the past year. Almost 12% also had two or more hospitalizations because of their asthma in the past year. It's a leading loss of productivity as well, in that about 20% of kids with asthma have missed multiple days of school, three or more in the past year. About a third of parents of kids with asthma have also missed work in the past year because of that asthma. Injury and safety is another area that was identified as a top health need. This rises to the top for one reason, that accidents and unintentional injury are the leading cause of death for metro area children and youth past the age of one, particularly for adolescents once they get to approaching driving age, 15 to 19. Motor vehicle accidents in particular are a leading cause of death. We also talked about safety issues, neighborhood safety. About one out of 10 parents live in neighborhoods that they perceive to be slightly or not at all safe. About one out of five also say they don't always feel safe in their own homes. In terms of the child safety at school, as well as away from school, 17% of parents say they have serious concerns for their child being bullied. So various aspects of injury and safety are rolled up into this one need. In terms of birth statistics and information that's collected through birth certificates, we found that it's about one out of four pregnancies in Douglas County that does not get timely prenatal care. 25.9% did not receive care that began in the first trimester of pregnancy. You can see in the chart, that red line represents Douglas County over the latter half of the first decade of the 2000s. And you can see that that percentage has actually climbed a little bit. We also see 8.4% of births to babies who are low birth weight, meaning below 5 pounds, 8 ounces. Infomortality rate here in the metro area is 5.7 deaths per 100, or per thousand births. That's death of children before their first birthday. That's a rate that's above what we see statewide, but below what we see nationally. But we also know that it's historically very high in African-American populations. That's true here, as well as it is in most communities. Mental health was also an issue that we identified as a top need. Much of the information that we collected through the survey is presented in this chart. We found that about 8% of kids are reported by parents to have mental health that is only good some, or a little, or none of the time. That was particularly higher in the northeast part of the city. At right, you can see about one out of five parents have a child they say worries a lot. 10% of children have difficulty sleeping. 2% have actually had periods of two or more weeks when they were so sad or hopeless that they stopped doing some of their usual activities, and that increases with age. So that's more prevalent in adolescents. Only about half of those kids get treatment for that condition. In the survey, one of the first questions we asked parents also was to give us their top-of-mind perceptions of what they see as the top health needs for kids. Mental health emerged as one of their primary concerns for, particularly for adolescents, those aged 13 to 17. Most of those parents felt that our current resources are not sufficient to address the mental health needs. I think that's also what we found in the focus groups when we talked with those key informants. It was also a top-five concern for those folks. They talked about difficulties accessing healthcare for mental health services, a shortage of providers who specialize in children and adolescent mental health. They talked about stigma as being a barrier to accessing care. They also discussed what they saw as over-medicating kids or going for the easy solution in a lot of cases, rather than looking at long-term behavior modification or coping skills for Obesity and nutrition, a top concern for parents in the survey. At the very beginning, they identified obesity and nutrition as their number-one concern for metro area youth, for both very young kids, as well as adolescents. Key informants in those focus groups also identified obesity and nutrition as a top-five health concern for kids in the metro area. They talked about food deserts, parts of the city where people don't have access to healthful foods, the easy access of fast food as an alternative, a need for nutrition and cooking education. In the survey, part of what we did also was talk with parents. And the survey addressed the health of a randomly selected child in the household. Part of that was to collect information relative to that child's height and weight, and from that, we calculated a body mass index and determined whether that child was healthy weight, overweight, or obese. And what we found, and what this chart at the right shows, is that 30% of metro area youth who are school age, so age 5 to 17, are at the 85th percentile for their height and weight and gender, meaning that they are considered to be overweight. In that chart, you can see these bars represent some of the segments that were over that average. So we see higher prevalence of overweight in, for example, northeast Omaha, in boys, in children in elementary age, in the elementary age group. Low income in particular, 46% prevalence of overweight among those in households below 200% of poverty. Also higher in African-American, Hispanic, and other non-white segments of youth. We also found that less than half of kids in the metro area are getting that recommended five or more servings of fruits and vegetables per day. Another area of need that emerged was related to sexual activity. And this was selected because of what we know to be historically high prevalence of sexually transmitted infections in the metro area, and particularly in Douglas County. And the majority of these occur in adolescents and young adults. In this chart, at the bottom of the pie chart, you can see for all of chlamydia cases identified in 2011, 31% were in adolescents aged 15 to 19, 36% in those just entering young adulthood, aged 20 to 24. It was also a top concern among parents in the surveys. So parents in the metro area recognized this as a health issue, which I thought was interesting. That's not always the case in the communities that we work in. For the key informants, sexual activity and sexually transmitted infections also identified as a top-five health need for metro area youth. Then the last area I want to cover relates to substance abuse. Now, this was recognized among parents in the survey, as well as among key informants in the focus groups, as a top concern for adolescents in the metro area, specifically those in Douglas County and the surrounding areas aged 13 to 17. There was very little data, hard data, that's available relative to substance abuse in youth. I know going forward, we will in the future have some of the youth risk behavior survey from the schools, which will help fill out this data set, which will give us more information. But it was recognized as a concern for the area, both among parents, as well as among key informants serving the metro area. Key informants talked about not just the prevalence of drug use and alcohol use in youth, but also the lack of treatment facilities, specifically those dedicated to young people. They also talked about instances of parental in knowledge and complicity, particularly as it relates to alcohol use, and adults actually providing alcohol for youth. So that was a concern as well. So to recap, I wanted to share with you the eight areas that I talked about today. And again, these were just those eight areas that were emerged as top health needs for youth in the Douglas County and metro area. What I also wanted to share with you was the same list that emerged from the assessment that we did for adults in, I believe, 2010. And what's striking is that the similarities are glaring, in that many of these top needs for children and youth are also needs among adults. So what that tells us is that we have the opportunity then to develop policies and programs to address some of these issues across the age spectrum. So with the exception of some of the adult, very age-related disease conditions, things like heart disease and diabetes, there's a lot of interplay between these two groups. So a lot of consistency as well. So with that, I want to thank you. Any questions about this study?
I just wanted to, I don't know what's wrong with my speaking thing. And while I thought that I wanted you all to see this from Bruce, is because the point he made at the end about a lot of things they're seeing in the youth, they're seeing in adult, and I hope the piece that came out to everybody was the point that, I think which a lot of us knew, but how the world of actually the juvenile justice stuff and public health and healthcare in itself is actually just merged together all in that piece. Whether you want to talk about, you know, the concerns you talked about for mental health, the substance abuse that were top-five, that they noted in there were insufficient, and a lot of the things that are at the core of what you're trying to do with JDI, to find those alternatives that would keep people from having to be housed in the system to even get the treatments, to a lot of the stuff that's being discussed, and even the point to where he said those, again, those issues with kids and adults, I think, you know, we see some of that stuff playing out, you know, in the monthly report we get from the jail. So I thought this kind of tied to, at least in the overall point of what we're doing things, to kind of see that trend that he talked about in the city and certain parts and certain populations. If, I guess, there's not something we try to do to convert it right now, it's going to keep going and going, and the numbers are just going to get to a certain point. So that's at least the context of what I wanted to say with that one from this presentation.
And to add to that, many of the issues that we're seeing in adults clearly have their roots in youth and children and young adults. Those problems began much earlier.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you for your presentation. Is there a chance we could get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Maybe to each commissioner might be nice to him.
Absolutely. I can provide that. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you.
Next, we'll move to committees, the first one being Finance. Is there anything from the Finance Chairs, Commissioner Morgan or Duda?
As presented.
Okay. Next, we'll move to the Human Resources. Their weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. There are a couple of legislative bills. Before I get into those, I did want to report that the tri-county commissioners met with the governor yesterday, and we had a spirited but good conversation about a variety of We talked from certain legislative bills to just county government in general. We talked about Medicaid expansion. We talked about the governance of county government, the form of county government. And so the governor is very open to continuing our conversations, and so we'll meet again in May, right before the legislature ends, adjourns. And so, you know, again, there were not real concrete things that came out of it, but again, open and good discussion that, you know, at least we have that open and good discussion. That's about. We do have a couple of legislative bills, item, or LB 11, which changed provisions relating to the surcharge for 911 service. And, you know, as you all know, we're the only county that collects 50 cents rather than a dollar. This provides for the uniformity of all counties collecting that dollar.
But that's, is that landlines only, or is it all phones as well?
Commissioner, I believe that it's all active.
All, all, all. All it's, very good. Thank you. All right. So it is in our best interest to support LB 11, and I would ask for a motion to support. Is there a second?
All second.
You don't see it going anywhere, do you, Commissioner? Please vote.
I think we had a four-year window to try to make that happen. Motion passes.
Next is LB 318, and this basically expands the fingerprinting and description requirements to include persons arrested for any felony, certain misdemeanors, violations of city ordinances, or for any criminal violation. And this would definitely, Nebraska law enforcement agencies are required to provide this, but this would expand it and actually increase the duties and workloads of our correction facility with substantial costs associated with it, and so we are recommending oppose LB 318. Patrick?
Commissioner, Dr. Foxall would, with your permission, testify before the intercam rolls, for the committee on February 8. And he is here to speak to the bill if he would like more information.
I would move to oppose LB 318.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Do we have a figure for what it might cost us if this were to pass any ideas?
Do we have a fiscal note on what it would cost the county?
We have not been asked for a fiscal note, but Mark has been working on the numbers. Apparently, the bill only went to sheriffs and county attorneys, so we got late notice of it, presumably because most of the county's law enforcement does the fingerprinting and not corrections.
Mark Foxall, Director of Corrections, just said, "We got late notice of this last week and immediately contacted Patrick and a few other of my peer group around the state to see if they had seen the bill." And many people were not aware of it, so we did not get a fiscal note, but we immediately started working on some of the numbers. And at first blush, we do approximately 1,700 bookings a month. This would double our bookings, because under current technological configuration, you can't print somebody unless you book them. And we would go from 1,700 to approximately 4,000 bookings a month, which would increase our staffing and admissions, increase our staffing in medical. We'd have to open up more housing units. We're somewhere around 2.5 million in increased expenditures if we have to deal with this. So.
Okay. Commissioner Kraft?
What is the reasoning behind wanting to push on this bill?
Sir, I do not know.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding is it's just to have the database.
I have no idea what the motivation was behind this legislation.
New York?
I do not know.
I mean, because New York has something to some degree. I know they were trying to do this fingerprint deal.
As I said, we're scrambling, just trying to figure out the impact on our end, and I have not had a chance to go out and look at what other models are around the country to adopt this legislation. We can get to that, but, and do some of the historical piece on it, but we're not there, not there yet, because I got this Thursday, last Thursday.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Duda?
Do we know whose bill it is?
McGill.
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 Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Could you imagine the impact if we were then required to fingerprint everybody who was coming in to visit in the correctional system?
Yes, that would be a pretty significant impact, but, you know, we're going to, a little visitation to alleviate some of those concerns.
Yes, uh-huh. It would.
I don't even want to think about that.
It'd also clear up a lot of warrants real fast, wouldn't it?
Potentially, potentially.
So we are asking that we oppose LB. Was there a motion and a second? Okay. Please vote. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion passes.
Next, our resolution supporting the passage of LB-577, change provisions related to the medical assistance program in LB-578, create a fund to provide funding for Medicaid services, and change distribution of premium tax revenue, which are pending the Nebraska Legislature. These basically are the bills. We took, we passed a resolution supporting the Medicaid expansion. These are the specific bills that were introduced by Senator Campbell and Senator Norquist, and so we are asking for support of both LB-577 and 578. Please vote. Commissioner Duda?
If I may, I would also say, this is a direct result of the HMA study. I mean, it was over and over in the HMA study how we need to be supporting this, and we are on record, as of having sent a letter to the governor, asking him to reconsider his position. I think we picked up at our meeting yesterday, I don't think he's reconsidered yet. Not that I expect him to. But we are not actually on record in terms of lobbying the legislature, and so that's the idea of this. Thank you.
Motion passes.
We do not have need for an executive session. There is a Child and Youth Committee Services Meeting at 1:00 PM, in Room 903. We have a motion to adjourn, so please vote.
Motion passes.